Good evening. We're going to begin with the town administrator offering a couple of comments as far as for the people in attendance this evening.
Governor Ogun's latest guidance on public gatherings is number one. We're well within the limits, as you can see in here. I ask you to wear your mask. If you need to speak, keep your distance. You can take your mask off and speak. On the table, on the far side of the room, there's a copy of the current executive order, if you need to look at that. In the hallway, you'll find two restrooms. There is some and hot water, and there's also a hand sanitizer on the table over there.
Thank you, sir. So we'll call to order our regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for Monday, October 26th, and if you don't mind joining us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So since we were not able to approve our minutes for the regular session from September 28th, 2020, due to a lack of form of the old council for which the meeting took place, the first item for tonight is the approval of the regular session minutes for September 28th, 2020. And since it requires three votes for the approval of the minutes, and since I was a council member of the previous body, I will be voting if there is a motion to approve so that we have enough to pass the minutes. And we will be calling for seconds on all motions.
Is that allowed by our board? So we can call for seconds?
So we have a motion by Councilmember Purnell. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All vote. I don't think anybody can. An unanimous vote of Councilmember Purnell, Councilmember Purrell, and Mayor Tindall passes the meeting minutes from September 28th. Up next on our agenda is the regular session meeting minutes from October 13th, 2020.
I just have two corrections, Mr. Mayor. Under number three, the nomination and selection of council vice president, it refers to Mayor Williams and to Mayor Tindall. And then, under eight for adjournment, the vote acclamation represents the former council.
And Kelsey? Think you said that that was a template and you'll correct that for the next round?
Yep, I'll go ahead and make that change.
Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes with the corrections from Councilmember Ors?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the minutes with changes noted.
I'll second.
With a motion by Councilmember Mayor and a second by Councilmember Ors. All in favor, say aye. All vote. The minutes pass unanimously. All right. Item number two on the agenda is a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, and if Ms. Debbie Smalling would come forward, from Whisker Goes Purple, will present the proclamation.
All right. On behalf of the mayor and council, I present a proclamation to Debbie. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative to visible unified prevention and education efforts by community members in want to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunities to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyle, no use of illegal drugs and no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to the 31st, and whereas the town of Berlin further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now, therefore, I, Zach Tindall, Mayor of the town of Berlin, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage our citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, make a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number three on our agenda is the Royal Farms EDU agreement for two EDUs, and I believe Dave Engelhardt and Jamie Lachter are taking point on this.
Yes, we did a reevaluation of the order usage for Royal Farms, and they needed to purchase two more within the 24 months on their allocation agreement. So we sent them all the documentation, and they agreed that they had to buy two more to meet their usage.
Okay. And we have received payment for that already?
Payments been received. The correct contract has been sent to Two Farms Inc. and Jeff Fainbridge for signature. Once he, once she signs that, he'll send the original back, and then we'll wait your signature on that.
And now, when you say the correct contract, the one that was included in the packet, the flows, could you collaborate on that, so that everybody would know?
In the packet, on page one of the agreement, it's about the sixth whereas. There was an extra zero, it was 125,000 gallons. It's actually 12,500.
Okay. And that comes to five EDUs, and each one of those is 250 gallons per day.
Correct.
And we are seeking action on this by the council, correct?
I just have a question on the cost of the EDUs. How does that determine? Is that something that's set by the council, or how is that done?
The current cost is 16,800.
686.
Yep. That was set by the council back when?
2010?
Well, I'll go ahead.
2010?
Yes.
How often does that get reviewed?
Well, it hasn't since 2010.
It gets reviewed annually. The rates do get reviewed.
But what are the determining factors for setting that rate?
Cost of maintaining and upgrading and replacing stuff at the treatment plant, infrastructure and stuff like that.
Now, I know Councilmember Purnell's been asking about the study from Ms. Holloway. Will that be included in that study?
Yes.
Okay. So we can be looking for some fresh numbers on that.
And when might that be available? I'm hoping November.
And can I just, was that 16,686? That's okay.
Make a motion that we adopt the one of the sewer use and allocation agreement for EDUs for Two Farms Inc.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilmember Purnell and a second by Councilmember Purrell. All in favor?
Aye.
All vote? Are you listening?
Oh, I said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's hard to hear with the mask on. I was trying to listen closely, but it's a motion passes unanimously with all council members in favor. Item number four on the agenda is the 2021 holiday schedule, and Deputy Town Administrator Mary Bowlin will be taking point.
This is the holiday schedule as prescribed in the employee handbook.
The only thing that I'd add to that, Mary is correct, the holidays that are listed on the calendar with dates, the handbook says these holidays are holidays, but she's transposed that to fit with the dates. And then, when you get into the 2021 Christmas, New Year season, next year, Christmas falls on a Saturday, New Year's Day falls on a Saturday, so the holidays are celebrated Friday prior.
They're shifted accordingly.
Right. But that's it. Everything's out of the handbook based off of the Supreme in the last provision of the policy.
And we're also seeking action from the council on this?
Correct. I'll make a motion. We approve the holiday schedule for 2021.
So the motion by Councilmember Mayor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Ors. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All vote. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Item number five, we did have a change to the agenda and removed the State Highway Administration due to their inability to make our meeting. And there has been a substitution for item A, and that is the transfer or disposition of real property located on the south end of Maple Avenue, belonging to the town of Berlin, the Willows of Berlin. This is just an item up for discussion. The reason that this was changed is because depending on the action that the council would like to take with this property, there are some advertising deadlines that we have to meet. So that's why it's been added to this agenda. I believe Dave Engelhardt?
Yes, sir.
Is running point on this?
The property that Wolf Terrace currently sits on is going to be redeveloped, developed by Ingraham &amp; Incorporated. Mr. David Holden is here representing them tonight. In essence, the project had site plan approval from the planning commission this past January, January 8th, 2020. So the project, since then, has gone through almost all its engineering approvals. We have one comment letter remaining from EA Engineering for Stormwater. All the connections have been approved for the water, the sewer, the electric. We're within days of permitting the project. Last week, we became aware, the developer, Ingraham &amp; Incorporated, had found on a title search they needed to do for their funding that the parcel that you see in that hatched area on the overhead in front of you, on the south end of Maple Avenue, actually belongs to the town. And that was dedicated to the town in that short run of driveway, if you will, and still called Maple Avenue back in 1991. The town has not considered that our property ever since. We haven't maintained that short stretch. We don't plow it, to my knowledge. We haven't filled potholes in it. It's 11,000 square feet of property, including the roadway, doesn't really serve a public purpose. So when they came to this, and it would influence the project itself being completed, because the one building would be encroaching on town property to meet the setback requirements for the whole project. The new project is, the old units are 31 townhouse-style rental apartments that are going to be completely remodeled in and out. And they want to build 34 new townhouse-style rental units and a large community clubhouse, a community building on the site. It's a really nice site plan, big upgrade for the parcel itself and the neighborhood. And once we discovered this, and were alerted by last week, we kind of had to move fast, because they have a deadline coming up in December to get everything straight for their paperwork and their closing. So I consulted with the town administrator, Mr. Fleetwood, and the town attorney, Mr. Gaskell. And there is a process to convey or dispose of public land or public property of any kind, whereas we have to advertise 20 days of public notice before you can do a motion. But in order to do that and make 20 days, we couldn't just surprise you with it. We couldn't surprise the public with it. So we wanted to have a discussion item tonight, and then I'll advertise it in the newspaper. That'll be the public notice for 20 days. And then, we would try and have you decide one way or another what the outcome would be at November 23rd's mayor and council meeting. So that's what I have, and I've been, as far as the project, an overview for you, if you're not aware of it, and his discussion of it. I would introduce Mr. David Holden from Ingraham &amp; Incorporated.
Before we start with Mr. Holden, can you tell me who Willows of Berlin is?
I can.
That's Ingraham &amp; Incorporated.
That's our entity that we set up for this project.
So that is an entity contained in your organization?
Yeah, well, we try to identify the property by a name that has local association, so it's with Willow, with Willows of Millford, in Millford, Delaware, so Willows of Berlin.
And your organization is a for-profit corporation?
Yes, sir.
Contained on your board, or are there any local individuals from the town of Berlin?
We don't have a board.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Dave Engelhardt mentioned, I'm David Holden with the Ingraham Group. We've been in this room a few times over the last year, when we first kind of identified this property as a redevelopment opportunity. But our company, just by way of background, this is what we do. We develop multifamily housing for families and seniors in Maryland, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. Done it for about 30 years now. I've been with the company 22 years. We're active as a developer, the contractor, and the property manager. This would be affordable rental housing. We are used programs administered by the Maryland Department of Housing that provide financing for the project through a statewide competition. That's part of the reason why we've been in kind of a lengthy process, considering your proposal, you know, includes your design and your engineering. And we were selected last fall, and we've since then worked through the approval process. I have a board that shows you what we've got approved, just to kind of give you some little bit better context. Can everybody hear you okay?
I would say maybe speak up just a tad.
All right. So the plan here, you can see where Maple Avenue comes in, and we're proposing the four new buildings in orange that you see here around this green, and then with a clubhouse with an outdoor potlot and a porch pit with that's a popular activity out there now with the residents. There's three existing buildings that were built, I think, around 1991. Honestly, the records have been a little challenging, because a lot of this is not digitized, or even was scarce. It was approved as a condominium project with close to 100 units. The first 30 were built in those three buildings. One of the buildings has fire sprinklers, two do not, and our plan includes adding fire sprinklers to the two distinct buildings that are not sprinkler. Those three buildings were built, but those units were never sold. They've been rented since then. They could use some upgrades, some modernization. That's our plan, new kitchens and bathrooms, new exteriors, adding some windows, adding some interest, some aesthetic and landscaping. Then we also will upgrade the stormwater management. There really is no stormwater management out there now. There's also a lift station in the lower left toward Tutson Creek that we now have taken to MDE through the permit process, and that'll be operating for their standards and be inspected and monitored. And then, we also built the additional four buildings that you see there. It's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And then, the clubhouse includes office space for our staff. We'll have two full-time staff that are here during business hours, Monday through Friday, and they'll have 24-hour backup and backup on the weekends for resident needs. That community building also provides space for resident activities. We find that these communities can use a clubhouse, basically, for parties, recreational, educational. We allow the kind of the residents to kind of determine what kind of activities to go there, but we usually try to work around those components, as I mentioned. We also have a nonprofit partner. They're actually based in Delaware. They work a lot in the eastern shore, Milford Housing Development Corporation. And they'll be helping us with some of the program as well. They have access to funding for that. It takes them, we'll have a computer labs in there. We'll work for any kind of education or job training or employment that's appropriate as the units are occupied. I'm sorry, I don't mean renderings, but they're basically two-story construction with siding, pitch, shrews. All the units have exterior, private exterior space. There's no hallways. These are all, I call them stack flats. So you basically come in, once you come in the door, you're in your unit, you know, eat equal and maintain. So as I mentioned, we, as we started to look at this, realized, you know, 100 units was not in the cards, and I think the town's zoning has changed over the years. But we developed, the plan that we picked works really well with some, you know, outdoor space and incorporating existing units, or 65 units. We've been working along with the town, the state, the county. There were some easements out there that weren't recorded. We had to kind of like locate where utilities were. We've done all that now. And there's a lot of right-of-ways that are kind of conflicting. And so what we thought was a right-of-way turns out to be, it's basically, to go back to the other drawing, our entrance, which is mostly the end of Maple Avenue, right here, this area that's hashed, is actually not a right-of-way. It was, for some reason, deeded to the town, and our plan assumed it was our property, so we're stuck. And so that's why we talked to your staff about resolutions. We could modify our plan to address it. We'd rather not do that. I think we have a plan that works really well now, and wanted to see if there's a way we could come up with a resolution that was agreeable to the town so that we could continue with the project as planned. There is, we have an adjacent, a neighbor of the Stoll property. They have access off of Maple Avenue, and they have it also, I think, off of Elizabeth Street. But whatever we did, we would make sure that their access was maintained before, the same as it is before, it would be after any kind of transaction. So I wanted to, as they said, mention, this is a discussion. I have explained what we're dealing with here. I think this would be an attractive, I know it would be attractive, improvement for what's out there, full-time professional management improvements to the, not just the aesthetics of the existing units, but the life safety features, the landscape won't be freshly maintained, and then the units will provide additional housing for families in Berlin. So happy to answer any questions, and if you.
What I want to propose, Dave Engelhardt and Dave Holden, Dave for events, who's with GMV, a lot of Dave's, Dave Cubes, I'll call it. There's been significant discussion regarding this, trying to take the side of the developer, trying to take the side of the town. So what I'm going to suggest, and there's another option, then great, but I see that we have four options. One is to give that 11,000 square feet of property, which they've maintained for 30 years, give it to them, which I don't recommend. Have an appraised and sell it to them. Have Willows go ahead and redesign everything to make it fit on what's theirs today. Or the fourth option is, for lack of better terms, is to barter. And what we've recommended is to have the Willows pave Maple Avenue from that development all the way to Alton, to Flower Street. And then, I know in conversation today with one of the council members has been, what about putting in an additional section of sidewalk? Because what you currently have today, from the flower to Elizabeth, there is a sidewalk, but from Elizabeth to the development, there is no sidewalk. So it's about a 550, 600-foot stretch of additional sidewalk.
And are you looking for any guidance in what direction the council would like to go, or are those four items going to be all options during the public hearing process?
They're all options.
Okay. So you're not looking for any guidance as to which one?
No.
Okay.
I would like for you to provide a little more information concerning those options. I would like for you to provide, you talked about the appraised value. I would like to have that information. And I would also like to have a dollar figure put on the pavement and the sidewalk as described.
I know, just from Mr. Fleetwood's perspective, as far as, you know, all four options, it would be helpful, if we're going to redesign, I would like, if we're going, sooner or later, we know we'll move forward with that. If we can work out some kind of a transfer with compensation, and that's your preference, then if we could get some sense, I understand we have to go through the process and have the public hearing and voting and all, but just in the interest of trying to make our deadlines, and it'd be helpful to have some kind of sense of what other information you need to make your decision, and any other questions we could answer.
Mr. Gaskell, we can't truly do that without a public hearing first, correct?
Well, you could certainly, assuming that the council determines that this property is no longer needed for public use, you can certainly kick ideas around right now if you choose to, about what compensation, if any, you would want.
Thank you. Mayor Tindall, we've had a discussion, and you've used the term "public hearing" a couple of times.
Correct.
Not a public.
No, it's not.
So there would not be a public hearing on the transfer?
No, let me read to you, let me read to you the section of the charter, which allows the council to convey any real or leased old property when no longer needed for public use after having given at least 20 days' public notice of the proposed conveyance.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
Because there is a difference. I just wanted to.
There is, and thank you for clarifying.
I would not feel comfortable in conveying public property to a profit-making organization without those numbers that I have asked for. But I think, I also think that an arrangement can be entered into with proper knowledge. And that knowledge, as I see it, are those numbers that I asked you for. Because we need to know what we're doing, and we need to know the possible value to the town. And that's my entire interest.
And along those lines, just to be clear, everyone knows, we're talking about the land is in the hash, in the white hash mark, so it's mostly Maple Avenue. It's mostly our access.
And that's your only access into your development?
That's our only access, yeah.
That's going to be, and that's going to remain your only access?
Yes.
I personally would not like to force you to redesign this project. I would rather go for one of the other two options, or you take for the property or pave, pave Maple Street once we get those figures.
Okay.
Which is better than that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Perhaps we could take that off the table, if you agree.
I'm sorry, it's a little difficult for me to hear.
Did you not hear it?
No, it's a little difficult for me to hear, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I was saying, I would not be in favor of asking Dave to redesign the entire property, so I'd like to see that option taken off the table. That's my personal opinion. I would rather see one of the other two options, either purchase the property or pay the monthly, once we have the numbers.
Mayor, there is no motion on that?
I know. It's just a up for discussion. I'm just trying to give everybody the chance to speak their mind.
I agree with Councilmember Mayor on that. We did say that this already went through planning, and everything's good to go, aside from.
Yes, sir. If we didn't have this big bump, the next thing would be Mr. Ingraham giving me a check for all his permits and his EDUs and.
68,000.
And permit. It's, yeah, we're that close. It's been a two-year. And permit, it's, it's, yeah, we're that close, it's been a, a two-year process, so we're, we're very close.
The only other question I have, looking at this, when you mentioned the stole property, access to the stole parcel, then, well, I, and I see it here, right here, access to the stolen parcel is going to have to come through your, come, come through what you're hoping to become your port, portion of Maple Avenue?
Right.
So they're going to have to get access from you to get to the stole as well, I'm just looking for clarity.
Yeah, and I, and that's fine, but I understand they're, this is.
No, I mean, I'm just asking for clarity.
Yeah, no, they would, they, we would agree to, as part of the transfer, to leave an easement, to grant them an easement, so that their access is identical to what it is today, for the town as owner, and then we, but then we would take over, you know, maintenance of that stretch of road, paving, plowing, outfalls.
Just, just this, or the whole way to.
Just this, this is what's on, on my property.
And that, just as a point of reference, that's what they've been doing for the last 20, 30 years.
Maintaining that section.
No.
No, you haven't?
I, I, no, I think when you said what they've been doing the last 20, 30 years is, the length of roads that were on your property, you owned and maintained, the town did not, I think, is that what you meant?
Yes.
Yeah, prior to me, and, and so all these roads in here will be owned by us and maintained by us, and, and that's, and this would fall under that if we can work out a transfer.
I agree with having it consistent so far, I think there's anything to be worked at one way or the other, and I presume that the numbers make a difference, how much the town getting, how much the town giving.
Okay.
I'm just curious, as part of this plan, are you doing outdoor lighting program, put street lights up, art light lights?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, because they're not there, they're not there.
There isn't, no, the entrance lights actually will be solar, there's, there's a great solar street light now, it's battery, it's battery, but the other ones will be electric.
Electric.
Yeah, but yet another, we, it'll completely.
Mr. Nerr, the lighting and landscaping plan were part of the site plan approval by the Planning Commission, they did ask, and they, they were approved, town-facing lights, the style they chose, and the landscaping, that's all part of the site plan approval for the plan, and they were approved on, what'd I say, January 8th, 2020.
Correct.
And they had had several looks at it, they came, actually came in and did a concept presentation previous to that, back in the end of 2019, the Ingram and people, got tweaked a little bit, gave the Planning Commission a nice look at it, and then they moved into January for our first Planning Commission meeting of the year for site plan approval.
All right, good, if I could just summarize to make sure that I've heard everything correctly, and make sure we're giving the correct message to Mr. Dave, or David, we're not asking Ingram and to go through the redesign process, and the council, with the due diligence that's been mentioned, with an appraisal and the proper valuation of the street improvements and the possible sidewalk improvements, along with the easements for utilities that would be needed, are something that the council is willing to consider once we've done our proper, proper advertising, so if there's anything that I've missed, just make sure that it's included.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your diligence, because I know this is not a typical development.
In the U.C., you want to make sure there's easements for the stole property too, and whatever.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item up for discussion is going to be the New Year's Eve fireworks. Our Economic and Community Development Director, Audrey Wells, in conjunction with the police chief, and our town administrator will be running point on this.
Oh, good evening, Mayor and Council, a few weeks ago, you had tasked me with finding out some additional options for our fireworks that were canceled on July 3rd this year, and we were hoping to see if we could do something a little sooner, but with the COVID pandemic continuing, we weren't able to do that, so after checking with our fireworks company, I want to let you know what our final options are that are listed here. For, four years ago, previous mayor, G. Williams, asked that I look into putting on a fireworks show for the town, and the last four years, it, it's been pretty successful, but obviously, it's always up to Mayor and Council to make those decisions. So for option one, which would cost an additional $5,000 for fireworks to be held this year on December 31st, 2020, at approximately 8:00 PM, the town would still owe the $5,000, which is the remainder of the $10,000 contracted price, this decision must be made by December 1st, is the, is the drop dead deadline for the fireworks company. And in finding all this information out, I have confirmed with the fire marshal that he will issue the permit for New Year's Eve, I've also contacted Tom Colazo with Worcester County Parks and Recreation, he sees no problem with this date to use the fields for the fireworks shoot, and I've also discussed with the Worcester County Health Department on their requirements for that evening, and they do require a map of the layout, plan for, and plan for viewers, and also required at the location that evening would, would be socially-distanced measures must be practiced, or viewers must wash from their cars, a written plan and map required to be submitted to the Worcester County Health Department, and rules must be enforced during the event. Option number two would be to postpone the fireworks, well, or to not have fireworks for 2020, and to, to continue with the fireworks show for 2021 on July 3rd, we would lose 50% of the $5,000 deposit from 2020, so we would lose $2,500, but the remainder, the 50% of that 20,000, I'm sorry, the 50% of the 10,000, of the $5,000, the $2,500 gets moved to 2021 as a discount of the $10,000 for next year. The fireworks show would be at dusk on July 3rd, 2021, and like I said before, the town will receive that credit. Option number three would cost the town $0, moving forward, the town would forfeit the $5,000 2020 deposit, and the town could choose to no longer be responsible for any fireworks event, and those are your options.
Anything from the town administrator, the police?
I want, I want the chief to come in with this conversation, and help.
We had the opportunity to speak to the health director, Ms. Beth Jones, today, and she says that, number one, we would have to have a plan to go to the state fire marshal's office, and it comes to the county fire marshal's, if everything is as it is today, it's adaptive to doing her, in her opinion, there's a lot of things that we would actually have to go over, it's not only the actual people and location anywhere about slow ingress, egress on our side, in discussing this, we, we know that we, as a police department, wouldn't be able to handle it ourselves, in past years, we handled it all ourselves, the location itself changes everything, it makes things a little bit more difficult for us, because we have no traffic devices, no lights off of Dr. Mott Road, and we have to go ahead and do all that with personnel, versus us with actual keys to the lights and being able to change those 246, pushing everyone in a certain direction. So fireworks itself, without the pandemic, is going to be difficult, with it, it's going to be very difficult, and again, she had her, made a statement, she would, she has her presence, she would rather not, and again, knowing that we have the ultimate decision, but the plan has to be done and submitted to them beforehand, and, and again, they don't have a right to really refuse us, but they do have a right to go ahead and tell us, we have to fix these things with the plan.
Thank you, so, town administrator?
My, my recommendation is, is option one is not an option, so the decision is either option two, basically postponing until summer of 2021, and, and/or option three.
So, just so that we're understanding this correctly, after the discussion with the Worcester County Health Department, and the restrictions that are being placed on the permit itself from the fire marshal's office in Worcester County, you're saying that it would be very difficult for us to move forward with fireworks this year?
I don't think there's an issue with the fire marshal's office whatsoever.
No.
Because all they're going to be looking at is, they're seeing the actual plan for the fireworks, and I think that the company that we have, you know, they do these things in our sleep, so.
I think realistically, the, from the police perspective, the, the key word is, the plan must be enforced, and I think that it's unrealistic that it can be enforced, because we don't know what size crowd, number one.
If we're, excuse me, if we're the only show in town, then everybody's going to come here.
Everybody.
When you go ahead and say that we may be the only one to do a Christmas parade, everyone's going to come to this parade, and no one's going to be looking for any other, so again, when you have isolated events, and you're the only show in town, on the whole, again, we're almost talking about the shore, but definitely Worcester County, we're going to be inundated with people, everybody's going to come to the show.
Thank you, now I know this is a discussion item, are you looking for guidance from the council as to what direction they would like to see the town go?
We, we have, what's the deadline, I mean, December 1st?
December 1st.
So, I mean, yes, it's a discussion item, but we would entertain a motion if you feel comfortable doing that, if you want to wait until the next meeting, if you want time to digest all this.
And then you'll fill the council, it's a discussion item, it's up to them.
I can make a decision right now.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion to go to option two right now.
That was to delay until.
July 3rd next year.
And we would lose $2,500.
That's correct. Well, that's where it was for second.
So I have a motion from Councilmember Purnell, and a second from Councilmember Varell, for option two, of forfeiting $2,500 and moving a $2,500 credit towards the July 3rd, 2021 fireworks show, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on our agenda is a presentation with, with the Berlin Fire Company and the Berlin Fire and EMS, if Cheryl, President of the Fire Department, will be running point on both presentations.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council, Dave Fitzgerald, President of the Berlin Fire Company, and Berlin Fire Company Emergency Medical Services, normally, we're, just for new council people, welcome, welcome to the new mayor, normally, if it wasn't COVID, we'd also bring our fire chief here, or our EMS captain, because of COVID, we're keeping the numbers down, help you comply, if there's any questions that I can't answer for you tonight, you know, we'll write them down, we'll get appropriate officers to reply back to you. And again, again, welcome to the council, and we again extend the invitation to you all as a group to come to the firehouse, to get a tour, to review, you know, what you'd like to review, to bring you up to speed of, of how the fire company operates, and how we service the town with both fire, rescue, and emergency medical services, so this is our quarterly.
And actually, just before you begin, the Fire Department did extend an invitation to the entire mayor and council to be able to come and tour their facility, but due to the open meetings regulations, we had to postpone that, because more than three members would be in attendance, so therefore, we will be working with the Fire Department to find an appropriate time that works for the council and the Fire Company for us to do a tour that will be advertised, and the press, of course, will be invited, thank you, President Fitzgerald.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald, so we start with the Fire Company quarterly report, so these are statistics from July 1st, 2020, to the end of September, so what we present to you is the number of calls, fire rescue calls, 40, in-town limits, 33.9%, this is normally, for the new members, this is normally what we usually run, in and out of town, the in-town calls are slightly down, witness, just witness your conversations, the reason why, you're not having the events in town, the ball fields aren't going, so we are more usually toward the 40%, 60%, so the in-call town, in-call fire rescue calls are decreased, because again, the activities in the town have decreased because of COVID. Our busiest days for this period are weekdays, Tuesdays, followed by Friday and Saturday, this runs the trend, it normally is a weekday that's busier, why it's in the middle of the week, it, it's strange, but it usually is in the middle of the week, and we're busier during the daytime, more traffic on the road, 12:02, those are our busiest times for fire and rescue. Our response time for fire calls is, for this quarter, was 3.45 minutes, and that response time is from the time to now, one center, you hear the siren go off, we get some sort of alert, it's a pager, the fire siren, a text page, and I always leave that at the bottom, the matrix report was a report done by independent party, they use National Fire Protection Association, NPA requirements, for volunteer companies, nine minutes allows to respond, so we're well within that matrix, the county standards, for the county standard, we have six minutes, so they'll activate the siren, pager, text page, let us know we have a call, if we do not have a piece of fire apparatus, catapult apparatus, which means a fire engine, a large, not a utility vehicle, within six minutes, they alert the next company, who are going to be next closest, so we meet that criteria, average 3.45 minutes for the So then we get into budgetary, this is our first quarter of the fiscal year, just like it is for the town, so usually not too many highlights here for the first quarter, our donation drive, the good thing is, we're 8,000 higher than we budgeted, so that is a good thing, but however, we still are down overall from the past year, so that sounds a little complicated, but we, we estimated a 20% decrease because of COVID and what have you, and we didn't take that full 20% hit, so that's a good thing, but we still are down from previous years. Fundraisers, this is a big one, zero, none, we can't have fundraisers, just as you heard the presentations, we're restricted by our number of people to get together, normally our fundraisers for the first quarter, you would see, we would have our chicken barbecues out at Station 2, on Steen indicator highway, with that traffic, but we're not issuing field health department permits, and a lot of our members who participate in that are a vulnerable population group, they're aides, and have underlying medical conditions, et cetera, so we did not have fundraisers in this quarter. Our county and town funds, we are 50% of our budget, which is per charter from the county, how the fund is distributed, per contract we have, because we are in contract to the town, we operate under a contract, so the payment schedule is in that contract, so we are 50%, which is equal to the contract. On the expense side, we have had a couple expenses that have been over budget, we had two computers that were not in our budget replacement for this year, that needed replacement, and then we have our annual inspections and maintenance in progress, we just wrote a lot of checks yesterday for our annual vehicle maintenance, so that is a large expense, and that'll be in our next quarter report, to tell you how we were, we did have some vehicles that had some unexpected repairs, so part of your tour will be showing your vehicles, and giving you a schedule of our vehicles inventory, tell you how old they are, what they cost to be replaced, and what they cost to operate each year. So capital budget updates, we have no capital budget, we haven't had a capital budget for a few years with the Fire Company, so as we presented during budget time, we do have a large expenditure, looking at us over the next few years, that we have to plan for, that's our breathing apparatus, that's the air tanks that we wear, and the masks we wear when we're exposed to harmful environments, we can have about a $300,000 expenditure to replace what we have, our current inventory, we will probably be able to get, will be eligible for part of that in grant funding, depends again, what the grant funds look like through the federal government, there's AFG, Assistance to Firefighter Grant, that we'll apply for when we're ready to do that, we cannot phase that in, we have to purchase these all at one time for operational issue, you don't want to have air packs that are model one, then the model changes, and you got a model two, and you got a model three, so it's best operation, they get replaced all at one time, so they're the same model. at one time, so they're the same model, have the same options, so that any time a firefighter puts an air pack apparatus on, they're all the same model, you can't remember, oh, the button's over here on this model, that's down here on this model, so that's, that's a big thing when we replace, we try to replace all at one time for safety and operational. Again, we can show you that when you have the tour. We won't, we don't know what our next year's state aid funds will be like, but we took a 26% cut in the budget this year and 10% cut next year, our state aid funds are based on a complicated formula from the state, and we will see that probably in next year, state aid funds, they will likely be reduced because they are based on what the county and the towns fund us, since of the cut, we will, we will receive a cut at some point from our state aid funds. That's Paul Clark, I'm recording, do you have any questions on that?
I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned fundraisers, aside from this year, what other types of fundraisers do you do?
Normally, our fundraisers, we have the chicken barbecue, that's been successful, we started, we'll have a clam bake that we usually have once a year in May, that's usually very well attended. We have tried a modified casino night, it's not been very successful, we used to have two a year, but since we have a casino now and a commercial establishment, they've not been successful. We have breakfast, monthly breakfast through the winter time, I think we have other dinners, we also have lost a great amount of money in our, just our regular hall rental, our banquet hall, and our administrative rental, building rentals, there is no rentals because people can't, as you heard earlier, people don't want to follow the rules, and then we are restricted to either 50% criteria, so that, we've lost all of our hall rentals, so those are how we raise our funds.
So in a typical non-COVID year, how much does all that fundraising bring into the Fire Company?
I don't have that right in front of me, but that can, that can be anywhere from 5,000 to 50,000 or 60,000 dollars an hour of the year.
Okay. In, in terms of the donations, you said donations were down, were people donating less money, or were the number of donations coming in less?
Less, less money, they appear to be the same quantity amount.
Same number.
But, but less money.
Less money, oh, okay.
Yeah, I've been doing this, well, I've been up there 32 years and have helped with the fund drive most years, and you can see recognized names, and the amounts were different, where you see a 200 or 250, you might not see a hundred dollar check this year, that's where I, I'm interested.
And that's your biggest fundraising effort?
That, that annual drive is one of our biggest fundraising efforts, when we put the mail out to the community, the Fire Company does the mailer July 1st, and through July and August, the people return the envelope, direct deposit back to Taylor Bank.
Before, before COVID, the ice rink agreement?
Yep.
Was that a fundraiser for you guys?
It, it was, we were going to do a very low, I think we were only going to charge like five dollars, just to help the county and promote, just do a community event, all the time, it's not always about making the dollar, we try to make the dollar, but we also try to be a good community partner, and this is one, we were going to try to be a good community partner, it was new for Mr. Plaza, for the county parks and rec, so we were just going to charge five dollars to get the community something to do.
Right.
And we were doing it the winter time, here before February March, when COVID came about, so we do try to think outside the box and think of things.
Is that, is that something you think might be able to be done in the future? I, I, I thought it was a good community response to that, and then COVID happened, so just asking if that's?
Yes, we, we have talked to the county.
Yeah.
About if we can get past some general restrictions with COVID, we've told them we're interested in the rink, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree on that, thank you, council.
Just, just to mention, I believe the ice skating rink was a very good idea, just at the one time.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and then we've got the EMS presentation. So this is for the Emergency Medical Services Corporation, provides the ambulance service. So we start out in the same order, 239 in-town calls, 47.9%, this is down, this is usually, and again, I've been in the Fire Company over 30 years, this is the first time that I can ever remember a quarter being below, having more out-of-town calls than in-town. This is usually a 58% in-town call volume, and again, just looking at the call stats, it's down because again, nothing's been going on at the parks, no in-town events, traffic's down, nothing at the Lions Club parks, so the calls, the calls are down for the in-town limits, so it's only 47.9% of calls in town for this quarter. Transports, we're still transporting about half the people that we go on calls, so 152 transports were in town, non-transports, so for the new council members, what a non-transport, we could go to, to a home, person decides they don't want to go by ambulance to the hospital, non-transports could also be going with the Fire Company, we always send an ambulance with a fire call, because you never know when you get there, if there's an injury or we could have one of us have a medical emergency or become hurt, so the non-transports are just where we respond to an emergency call, and we do not take a person to the hospital. But everything we do, so you know, everything we do is dispatch for both fire and emergency medical service to the 911 center, we do not do any routine business work, that is all handled by commercial companies, all of our responses for fire rescue and emergency medical service are 911 calls, calls to the 911 center, so we don't do any business type transports to the public. Our busiest days was the tide, Monday and Tuesday for the EMS, same as fire, 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., and then the busiest block or 12 hours is 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and while we monitor that, that helps with our staffing, we used to upstaff until this year, we had, we had two full crews on with the budgetary cuts that were made, that was one, you'll see when you get your hands, and we have a review of EMS budget, EMS budget is pretty simple, while it's a lot of money, it is the vehicles, it is the medical supplies, and the people, just like you have town employees, the personnel is a large expense, you can't cut the vehicle, you got to have the vehicle, you can't cut the Band-Aid, so where our cut had to be made was in personnel staffing, so we have no longer have two crews at Firehouse. One of the stats that I just got today, and needs to be reviewed, we had well over 20 to 25 calls since we have cut back, that other companies have been alerted in our fire EMS district, where Ocean Pines, Ocean City, Newark, Shaw had to come in and had to be alerted, I need to delve into those numbers, I just got them this afternoon, to see if we finally became available, the first crew got available and they were canceled, I do know some calls from listening to the radio, where we have very good partnerships with our other companies, where they gave us, they gave us one person of their crew to help with our crew, so we could respond, or transport in Berlin's ambulance, so for example, we only have one person in Berlin, Shaw has one person, we come together, Shaw will park their ambulance off to the side, get into Berlin ambulance and take the person to the hospital, this is an example, we're a partnership where we work together, and we would do the same for them, if they had a problem, but this is the most calls that I know since June that we ever had in alerting other companies for EMS, but that's why we had the 12-hour window on the EMS stats. The response times, .97, so, so, you know, we're less than a minute average getting out the door, this is very good, 60 seconds for a staff, staff station, so we're on .97 of a minute, so about 57, 56, 57 seconds, we're out the door with our career staff, because we do have one career staff there 24 hours a day. The budget highlights, annual donations for the EMS, those do not get mailed out till Monday after Thanksgiving, we keep that separate, so people do not get confused between the Fire Company and the Emergency Medical Services Corporation, so of course, we have no revenue now because they haven't been mailed out, so we're being prepared now for mailing, our invoices are down 7%, that is just due to, you saw the call volume, in-town call volume is down, so if we don't transport anybody, we can't summon invoice. All our county funds have been received, that's part of their distribution of funds, and we're at the town funds, we're at 50% per our contract with the Emergency Medical Service Corporation with the towns. The expense, we're at 25.19%, so we should be at 25%, so we are pretty close, you know, we had, took a 27% budget cut, so that tells us what, what we've cut, we're within the budget of what the town reduced, we've, we've had to reduce the same amount, so we are, we are on track with our payroll, just unfortunately, we've cut, cut the staff. All our other accounts are currently in budget, which means our fuel, our medical supply, everything, they're all within, insurance, et cetera, all within the budget for this Capital funds, the same as I mentioned for fire, we need to come up with a plan for capital for ambulance replacements, the good news of this is all three of our ambulances are new, we replaced the last one last year, we had to take a loan, and our loan payment was paid this year, the county allocates, it's a long formula, and part of that formula is they provide a grant for every ambulance you have in service, and that helps pay that loan that's had on that third ambulance, so we are off to date on our ambulances, so that's a good news that we're not losing that ambulance replacement anytime soon, we just need a plan for it, so when it comes up, we are ready to go.
You do have one unit that's still finding?
Yes, we have, we have a loan, and the last ambulance had to be purchased by loan, and we did, we did work with local bank to finance that, so we're trying to keep the money local and get.
When you do an out-of-town EMS service call, do you bill the county for that call, or the individual?
So every patient who gets transported gets a bill, the same amount of bill, we can't bill the patient differently based on where they live or where they're picked up, that's a fair billing practice. If we transport out of town, we get three times greater the amount back from the county, so an in-town call that's transported, we would get $190 roughly back from the county, if it's out of town, we get triple that, so the county does support, and it, and it is a formula that we'll review with you when we meet, where we get certain amount of reimbursement for in-town, certain amount of reimbursement for out-of-town, and that's why it's important that the fire and EMS are involved in the annexation processes with the town and communication, because, I don't know if I had a way to say it, we lose money, I shouldn't say we lose money, we get less money from the county for an in-town call, so on the fire, it's even more severe for an in-town, and I won't confuse you, jump back to a fire call, that's easier to explain, if it's an in-town fire call, we get zero county money, if it's an out-of-town fire call, we get $1,000. So a piece of property out here that maybe has no development on it, we wouldn't respond, we wouldn't respond, it's an open field, now all of a sudden, it gets annexed into the town and becomes an apartment complex, well, we might go to that 20 times, we're not going to get anything from the county, if it was out of the county, we'd get $1,000 a call, but I also understand how the development works, that apartment complex probably wouldn't have popped up without the town, because it wouldn't have had water, sewer amenities, so familiar with the town planning processes, but that's, again, why we need to talk and maybe come up with a fire EMS impact fee, when this open field gets in that annex and pops up, we need to provide you, the fire and ambulance companies, with information, it's your decision to make policy, but we want to share information with you, we, we can run stats and say, an apartment complex this size, this is probably how many ambulance calls it's going to generate, this is probably how many fire calls it's going to generate, even though it's new, and I apologize for jumping back and forth between fire and ambulance, but we, we can, you know, it's new, probably not going to be burned, burned down, that's a comment that was made one time at council, mayor and council meeting, the person said that's probably correct, it's going to have sprinklers, the fire code's going to be great, but you're still going to have calls, you're going to have false firearms, cooking on the stove, you're going to have elevator rescues, you're going to have a car that catches on fire in the parking lot, you're going to have increased traffic, you're going to have automobile acts, you're going to have the entrance, so that's why we've asked to be involved in the planning process, and yes, all your plans go, the last comment when I asked about this, was make the Fire Marshal handles all that, all plans go through the Fire Marshal, well, they do, but the Fire Marshal does not make any judgment on response and operations, and your planning commission and your honorable planning director sends things down to the Fire Marshal, they're looking at fire code, they're making sure the buildings decode, how wide's the street, can the fire truck get in, is sprinklers ready, is our hydrant in the right spot, they're not looking at operationally, how many times and how much it costs operating the Fire Company, and they're not doing anything with ambulance, they, they don't even have any expertise in the ambulance, so that's why, why we've asked to be involved in that process, just to give you, you know, an idea of, hey, this development is coming, this is what we think on our best knowledge, based on historical data somewhere else, calling another town on our side, if the XYZ factory pops up, how many times do you think we're going to respond to that, and let you make decisions about income, whether you think that's an impact fee, or, or, you know, what do you think that is? Again, that's why, why you make those policy decisions, we just want to bring that information to the table. So I hope, I got a little, little off on your question, but I hope my answer's right.
That's fine, that's fine. I just have another, this is a terrifying question for me, these are quarterly, quarterly reports, which would be July 1st to September 30th, and then on some of these slides, it's probably, it may just be a typo.
It's probably a typo.
It's June to September.
It's probably, it's probably a typo, I apologize, it's probably a typo.
All right.
But they are all July 1st to September 30th stats, yeah.
Thank you.
They have a question for calendar year 2020, and with the pandemic in place, has the Berlin Fire Company made application for either Phase 1 or Phase 2 of the CARES money, and so what do you see to this point?
We just had, matter of fact, we were corresponding today with?
The deadline's passed for Phase 2.
So are you, you talking about the CARES, when you say CARES, there's a lot of funding, so the county received two pots of CARES funding, one is for reimbursement of expenses, and the second is economic development. So we just had correspondence today, we mean several fire companies, because we were on a chain email that I saw when I got home from work, with Mr. Higgins, the county administrator, and he's given us the guidance on what could be, the CARES money could be used for, so for example, I gave him, actually, I sent him an email yesterday, which may have started this conversation, of what our expenses were so far, extra personal protective equipment, extra cleaning supplies for both the emergency medical and the Fire Corporation, so we are having a conversation with all the fire companies are involved in trying to be reimbursed for our extra expenses.
So my question is, have you made applications for Phase 1 or Phase 2 funds?
So there's no real application, it's just a, a correspondence with the county government.
And on their side, the county is actually taking care of the fire department as a group.
So like I said, it was, it was an email today that Mr. Higgins sent out with some guidance on what the funds could be available for, and like I said, just coincidentally, yesterday I had sent him an email of a high-level summary of what expenses the Fire, Fire Company and the Emergency Medical Corporation have spent, and again, it's personal protective equipment and extra cleaning supplies that we've had to purchase.
So today, you have not received EMS funds?
Not, not from the county, no, now, we have received two automatic payments, anybody who billed Medicare received automatic payments, and those are in an escrow contingency fund, because the federal government still has not told you how you can spend those funds, so we've been told, keep those separate, do not spend those until you get the guidance, so once we get the guidance, we will be, let everybody know what they'll be expended for. What the intent is, from what we were told, is, is to help offset some of the What the intent is, from what we are told, is to help offset some of the lower call volume. That's what we're told. And they're going to say, as long as it beats that, it doesn't exceed your lost call value, you'll be allowed to keep the funds. We'll have some of that.
So the answer is you have received some money?
So from Medicare, from HSHHS, we have received funds that are an escrow account. But from the CARES county funds, we have not.
But you have not received money from the county funds, but is it expected?
My answer is yes, I expect it. I would expect the health officer and the county administrator to reimburse those corporations for our expenses. I personally expect that, and I think their ask is, they expect to disperse that to us if they have that fund available.
Now David, during your last presentation, you discussed a threshold limit for those expenditures before you could get reimbursed for some grants. Now what is your threshold currently?
So if the CARES, if they do not reimburse us through CARES, we will apply to FEMA for what are called Part B emergency protective measures. There's a thirty-three-hundred-hour threshold, we have met that. We have spent about four thousand dollars alone in emergency medical service. So we will make application. Now that is only a seventy-five percent reimbursement back. And that was part of my email to Mr. Higgins yesterday, is we need to know something so we can make some application to FEMA for our expenses to date under FEMA Part B, which is emergency protective measures.
Thank you. And my next question is, during your next quarterly presentation, can you please include any grants that have been received related to COVID from any source, just so that we can all remain up to speed on that?
Yep.
Sure.
And I have a tag request to Zach's request. When you present your next report, can you provide for us any changes in operation that have resulted from COVID and the shortfall in funding?
And I'll be glad to, if you don't mind, Councilman Burrell, the first one for operations. Take some research. The second one, I can answer, the shortfall in the revenue due to the budget was an immediate cutback of staffing, where we do not have two full crews there at all the time.
Could you include those things with your next report?
I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you again for coming and doing these presentations. I realize that they're in the contract, but it's also very informative, one, for the public, two, for our new council members to be able to hear that.
And we'll be looking forward to hearing you soon, so we don't get into the holidays to have all of you up to the firehouse for review and report.
Much obliged.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, I guess the biggest thing that I want to share, I just wanted to put the shot over the valve. At the next meeting, we will have a more formal presentation. But if you think back, probably three months ago, Mayor Williams was very actively involved in an apple's from the lobby for the Senate Bill six seventy-seven, which is a bill that, it's an amendment to another bill, but it's, the issue that's going on in the state of Maryland, the governor said that by the year 2030, we're going to be at fifty percent of our energy through renewable energy. That puts a pretty good damper on the small municipalities. So I'll have a formal discussion with you guys at the next mayor council meeting. But I just want you to be aware that Mayor Pendle, Ted Lawrence and myself have had multiple phone calls regarding this. And we've got a game plan, and as I said, the next council meeting, we will go into detail on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are you going to also handle the?
Whoever's not here, so let's go to the department heads. For finance, Natalie Adams received her draft report from the independent auditors for the next meeting we meet as we speak. And we'll be ready for you. I think the actual date is the first meeting in December is when that's going to be presented by PKS. Mary?
I really don't have anything. Parks Commission meets next Tuesday. Nothing else really.
Or water resources, the one thing that I do want to share, the Franklin Ave, or sorry, the three forty-six Water Down River by the Dolphin Plant that is being repainted as we, well, I don't know if we're going to display that or not, but it's being repainted. That'll be online in the next two to three weeks, the paint is secure. So that's what's happening there. Electric Ted Lawrence is, I'm asking for you guys to keep him in your thoughts. He's over in northern Virginia, Alabama, family member, that's not doing well. Chief?
The mayor had opportunities swearing, one of our, actually our newest officer last week. So we up there welcomed a new certified police officer. We had testing for new applicants also over the weekend. We had physical test and a written test. And our human resources will be doing interviews with a couple of our officers on Tuesday?
Tomorrow, yep.
Tomorrow. So we are moving forward, trying to get someone in the next academy that starts in January. The actual testing process will take us all the way up. And we still have to go into background on whoever they select, the public for me as the hire. We're also in the middle of training because of COVID. We had a long stretch where we could not train. Actually, the academy was down for in-service. So we're trying to push that. We'll be able to do a taser and the use of force. We'll be going over LEAC, which is law enforcement's medical training. And the K nine officers, they'll be recertified at the end of the calendar year. So that kind of their monthly trainings coming through. That's in my report.
And the one thing I'd add for the chief, Jason Overguard, who's in the academy, he finishes up mid-December. And then his road time is what?
It's going to be at least nine weeks FTO. And again, it can be as much as twelve, but the minimum is going to be nine weeks.
And we will be bringing in Officer Rhodes and Overguard wants, Overguard wants these finished academy, but Rhodes fairly soon to be introduced to the entire council.
David?
I have nothing further.
I have the, it's left, but really nothing to share. I do want to share one more thing before I turn it over to Kelsey. It's the Public Works Department has finished up the cutting, if you will, of the West Street ditch. And what we did about a month ago, that ditch, part of that ditch is owned by the town, part of that ditch is owned by homeowners and part of that ditch is owned by Maryland Delaware Railroad. So we met with the railroad on site about a month ago. And I call this great news, not good news. We have reached an agreement with Maryland Delaware Railroad. We have a written maintenance plan for that ditch. When I say written and maintenance, the railroad is going to maintain that entire stretch of ditch from approximately Washington all the way down to the county line on Edmonton. So that's good news. And then we have pickup scheduled for November the fourth and November the eighteenth. Kelsey?
Just between the three new council members and the new police officer, just been busy kind of getting new employees into the system and stuff. So council packets and stuff, so I'm hoping this week can be a little bit of a catch-up week, so getting back into things. So nothing out of the ordinary.
And that concludes the departmental report. So we'll move on to comments from the mayor. We have Halloween this Saturday and we're in the middle of a pandemic. So I am strongly discouraging anyone from trick-or-treating in Berlin. It's usually a pretty big holiday here in town, but with the pandemic, we are discouraging that. Typically, there would be candy x-raying here at the police, or at the town hall. That will not be taking place this year. We typically shut down some streets to help aid in the pedestrian traffic. We are not claiming to do that this year either. The town administrator has met with residents on Washington Street and Burbage Funeral Home. The consensus is that they will not be handing out candy and having a huge holiday event like normal. So once again, please, no trick-or-treating in Berlin. And that concludes my report. We'll take comments from the councilmen. Sorry, from councilmember Burrell.
I have a few things.
Go ahead, sir.
First, I'd like to say I missed the first meeting where the new council members and the new mayor were sworn in. And I'd like to say congratulations. And I look forward to working with each of you in your position as council member of the town of Berlin. So I don't know if this is appropriate or not for me to say, luckily. Next thing is, I've noticed some meeting operational changes. And I would just like to say that, that not requiring a second for motions of the mayor council of the town of Berlin has been a longstanding tradition and practice. The reason being is, being a five-member organization, it has been felt that the thoughts and concern of every individual on this council are important and should be addressed by the council, thus not requiring a second. Next thing. This is a question. I noticed tonight that we did not start the meeting with the Lord's Prayer. I would like to know how that change was decided.
So I'll address that if you don't mind. Well, first, let's start off with the fact that I congratulated you privately, but I have not done so publicly. Councilmember Burrell is our new vice president. And we did give you a round of applause at our last meeting, but.
That was going to be my last comment.
So no, it's no secret that typically we have had the Lord's Prayer at the beginning of every meeting. At the start, what I've done with our town administrator is run through a dry run of how things take place before the meeting actually starts, so that I know the flow and that we can get this off without any hitches. With that being said, we were running through the flow and the topic came up of the Lord's Prayer. And I've always grown up saying the Lord's Prayer in most establishments that I've been a part of. But I also recognized during my time as a council member that not everybody saw things the way that I see things. And we're representatives of the entire town of Berlin, not just specific people within the town of Berlin. So the town administrator and I had a discussion. And despite our personal beliefs, we felt that it was the time to become more inclusive. Many more people call Berlin home now than they ever have in the past. And with that being said, we, well, I and the town administrator, in conjunction with our legal department, decided that we would just begin the mayor's council meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So that's how that all came to pass.
I would have thought, I would have thought, I would have expected that with the Lord's Prayer being a part of our meeting for so long, and never have I heard a concern from any citizen about the Lord's Prayer. I would have thought that change in operation or decision would have been presented to this group before it was changed and possibly heard public comment. That's just what I think. And Zach Collins stole my thunder because I wanted to thank Troy and each of you for your confidence in selecting me as vice president of the council. I will do my best. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wors?
I don't have anything. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Merk?
I just had a quick question for Jeff, and it's not meant to turn into a big discussion, but in your report, you mentioned you were running into hurdles with the resilience plan. And it's my understanding that that's more of a guideline, I read it. It's a guideline and not a mandate. So what hurdles are you running into?
Well, I'll fill in some of the blanks, although they didn't go in too long. The, it is a guideline. It was presented to the planning commission. And the hurdles that we encountered were no different than what happened in Worcester County with their resilience element. Scientific data, okay? When I say scientific data, the things that I heard in the planning commission that evening were, you know, I've lived here for sixty-five years, I've got a four-by-four in the ground, and the water level on that four-by-four stayed constant for sixty-five years. So climate change is not real. So I mean, that gives you the, I call it the big picture, but that was the gist of what, and it just was not accepted.
Okay. And that will proceed to the mayor and council?
Yes, it will.
There is going to be, just for clarity, there will be a public comment section, correct, David?
Whatever recommendation the planning commission comes up with is subject to a public hearing. It'll get advertised twice, illegally advertised. Once they make that recommendation at a public hearing, then I have to advertise it twice again for your consideration in a public hearing. So there'll be a recommendation coming from them about it. And then that will come to you for a motion at a public hearing to adopt it or add it to the comprehensive plan. Basically, it's a text amendment to our comprehensive plan, which we could do at any time by the same process. The resilience plan was developed with the grant to basically get us out of the requirement to redo our comprehensive plan this year. All we are required to do by Maryland Department of Planning and state regulations is review our comprehensive plan this year, go through it. And we've been doing that with the planning commission. We thought this was a good opportunity to have a grant aimed at the resilience, aimed at how we're going to deal with it the next twenty, thirty, forty years in town and be sustainable and have a chapter or a section to add to our comprehensive plan. And so far, Jeff's correct, the planning commission has balked at the idea.
And part of the other feedback that I would give was the concern that it was more regulation and more defined, you can't do, you can't do. That's not what it is. It's a, it's a pool, it's a guideline.
I use the term several times in the meetings, aspirational. And that's exactly what it is. It's what we should aspire to do with our eye on the future. And it's not just being afraid of the climate change and sea level rise and all. It's being prepared for it as a town, like what do we have to protect? Like the electric utility, the plants and the sewage treatment plants, all those things that keep us working as a town. How do we make sure that when these emergencies come up, and they will in the future, we're ready or we've budgeted for it even to? ready, or we've budgeted for it even, to, you know, have a capital improvement plan to replace that, or to keep maintaining it so it's running great, you know, right into, you know, 2100, year 2101, I don't know. But that's what this is aimed at. And like I said, it's purely aspirational. It mentions electric cars and things like that. Doesn't mean you have to have every vehicle in town, you know, an electric vehicle, but we could have some. They talk about tree canopy, so they mentioned, we're already concerned with whatever site plans we're looking at, the landscaping, and we want monumental trees. Right, but this is, again, a guidance document, so that we ensure we do that as we do every project, everything we do.
So even if you don't agree with the science, there's nothing in here that is going to cost the taxpayers additional money. It's purely a plan, a guideline for the future.
And it is not a code. It's a guidance document.
And if you read all 80-plus pages, then my hat's off to you.
I read 79.
Okay.
If I could just speak also to the grant funding aspect of it, we had the option of undergoing a review, possible revision of the comprehensive plan completely on the town's dime. And that probably would have been $25,000 or $30,000 to pull a consultant in and help us through that process. This was a way of making possibly a change to the comprehensive plan funded through a grant. So at the end of the day, we have a document that we can use to help us guide the future, possibly, hopefully, revision of the comprehensive plan, and we did not pay for it. We were able to receive a grant to cover that expense.
Now, just to clarify, the 80-page report, along with the 10-page executive summary, are both available online, just so that anybody that's watching, if they haven't had a chance to take a look, both versions are available. Councilmember Nichols?
So going into the resilience plan, yeah, I attended from afar that meeting, the commission's meeting, and we're planning and zoning. And I heard, I watched, I heard what the members had to say. And I guess my biggest concern there is when the question came to the motion to get rid of it completely and not have that, they can't do that, can they? Or can they?
They can make a recommendation.
Or fail to recommend.
But they would make that at a public.
Right. I just want clarity on that part. I mean, because I, again, I watched it, I heard, and there was a lot of back and forth and going and going.
That was not the public hearing. That was just a discussion leading up to it.
Regardless, the council's going to have the final word.
That's what I was, that's what I was just looking at clarity on. Thank you.
You'll get your opportunity to consider whatever recommendation they make, with a motion of all of you, so at a public hearing.
Yeah, that was the question I had in regards to that. Other than that, I just want to say thank you to everyone, all of the department heads, as well as everybody present. You guys have been available to answer questions for, I know myself, and my two cohorts over here, you know, when we emailed or called or what have you, and we appreciate the time. And the learning curve is definitely happening.
Absolutely.
Yes, so very, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, comments from the public. Did we receive anything within the deadline? No? All right. Comments from the press?
I have a question for Mr. Engelhardt. Do you know how many EBUs it is for the Willow of Berlin?
New ones?
Yeah.
They'll need 35.
35, okay, thank you.
34 new dwelling units and the clubhouse.
Okay, thank you.
Total of 35.
And then up next, the councilmember Burrell would like to make his traditional.
You too, Jer.